Okay, so welcome everybody. I'll call to order the Operations Committee meeting of April 21st, 2023. If we could have a roll call, but a roll call, please.
Good morning, Vice Chair Ranjit Kush.
Here.
Director Matt Sampson.
Here.
Director Jed Smith.
Here.
Director Monte Schmidt.
Here.
And Chair Larry Russell.
Here.
Thank you.
Thanks. And then a motion to adopt the agenda, please.
So moved. Second. Right.
And a vote, please.
Yes. Vice Chair Kush.
Hi.
Director Sampson.
Hi.
Director Smith.
Hi.
Director Schmidt.
Hi.
And Chair Russell.
Hi.
Thank you.
Okay, any public comments on items that are not on the agenda?
There are none.
Okay, then I think we can move to move on to approval of the minutes from our committee meeting of March 10, 2023. If I could get a motion for approval of the minutes.
So moved.
Second.
Then a vote, please.
And there are no comments on that. Vice Chair Kush.
Hi.
Director Sampson.
Hi.
Director Smith.
Hi.
Director Schmidt.
Hi.
And Chair Russell.
Bye.
Thank you.
Okay, first item on our agenda for today is an update on the professional services agreement with TeamLogic IT for help desk support services.
Great. Good morning, directors. We've got this presentation first, and then we have a very nice presentation on our water supply roadmap efforts. But first, we wanted to give you an update on our help desk service contract that we have currently in place. I have a presentation. Everybody see that? Good. Right.
They're gonna.
No, I can't see it.
Oh, I have to share. Sorry. Sorry.
And the mouse is right there.
Oh, that would be helpful. Thank you. Just a moment.
Now it's working.
Okay. All right, here we go. So first I'll give an overview. I'd have to move some icons out of my way just a minute. Of the contract and then a status of where we are with it. And also how we're evaluating its effectiveness of whether or not we're happy with the support. And then we'll talk about some accomplishments since it started and some lessons learned and then next steps. So just a quick background, the district operates seven major IT systems. We have our Enterprise Resource Planning Program SAP, GIS, SCADA. Our Work Order Management System is actually a module of SAP. It's embedded in the ERP. We have, of course, Microsoft Exchange and Office Software. We use a product called Content Server for document management and workflow processes. And then we have Cisco Voice Over Internet Protocol Phone System or VoIP. Now, these are just some of our major systems. There's a lot of subsystems, software systems that support our operations. For example, Itron for meter reading. We have Innovise for hydraulic modeling and Liquid UI for custom graphical user interfaces for SAP. You can imagine we have at least another dozen or so specialized programs that we use at the district every day. But getting into the Help Desk Service Contract, we historically have had four full-time positions that support five to 10 help desk tickets a day, and they perform other duties as assigned. For example, Cisco phone support and some of they would specialize in certain systems. But over the last 18 months, the district experienced a lot of staff departures and resulting in a gap in critical IT services. And at the time, because of revenue reductions, we had a slowdown in hiring in order to benefit from salary savings. So we realized we needed some help, so we decided to contract with a help desk company to see if we could get some augment our staff for support. So the scope of services were very limited for this contract. We didn't, we have subject matter experts in many of our applications. So we wanted to make sure that whatever company we brought on was very limited scope. So they were supporting the laptops, printers and iPads, desktop support, Microsoft Office's software support, new employee enrollment, they could add email accounts, they could also do file permissions for access to different servers. And they also took on Citrix, which is our remote desktop service for, you know, teleworking and working remotely. So but all other ticket requests that were going to be continuing to come in, we're still going to be handled by our internal IT staff and other subject matter experts that we have on board to support those applications. So the vast majority of our IT support was still being handled in the normal historical way, including the list here, GIS, SAP, our admin of our servers, security, you know, content server and Cisco phones. So on October 22nd, or October of 2022, the district, we executed a PSA with TeamLogic IT after soliciting proposals from other companies. We started the onboarding process in November of last year, and we performed beta testing. And then they actually went live with a help desk portal on January 3rd of 2023. So it's a consulting firm based out of Santa Rosa. They support the help desk with a fixed monthly price. And that includes this online ticketing portal. And also they have automated desktop health checks. So they've been able to actually go through and fix quite a few things that are that wouldn't have been initiated through a help desk request. It was just that the the computer itself might have needed an update and it was unknown to us. So they have this automated health check system now. And so they also, the staff is located in multiple time zones, so they're they're able to support us at any hour if needed. And they also have great reporting system. So now we can track how many tickets we're getting a day, how long it takes to resolve the ticket before it was all just done via email and voicemail. So here's a screenshot of the portal for logging a ticket request. The panel, the support panel. And as I mentioned, we can do mass updates and patches, and it gives us these administrative reports. And digging in just a little bit further, you can, the next screen on their portal, you know, there's a lot of information that we asked from the user, you know, the priorities, et cetera. And at some point, we could actually have FAQs for commonly, you know, submitted tickets. So folks could maybe solve the problem themselves as we find out what are the common problems that people are facing with IT support. So and then there's this health check report. So we have over 200 computers that are online. And every morning, they they are running these checks to determine whether or not there's an update needed, a security patch, whether or not the computer's been left on for more than 30 days and hasn't needs to be turned off. There's been a lot of emails going out to folks saying, hey, you need to turn off your computers so we can put in some updates. So it's continuous improvement at this point. It's been a few months since we started. And we, the IT staff has been meeting regularly as much as we can to discuss how each ticket and and as many as we can get through and how it was resolved and what are some of the improvements that we could make to to make it better in the future? And what are some of the service level expectations? So I, TeamLogic IT is adjusting and learning to our district's systems and processes. And we've created documentation on roles and responsibilities. We've better informed the whole team as to if it's this issue, call this person. If it's this issue, TeamLogic needs to reassign it, the ticket to one of our internal staff, et cetera. So so we can get it to subject matter experts. And then we even have started, just recently, we started involving the TeamLogic Operations Director to attend our ticket review so that we can facilitate, you know, liaison to facilitate, you know, process improvements quicker. So here's a specific example of something that we realized is that, you know, the district starts work at 6:30 in the morning. And the folks in Santa Rosa weren't necessarily there at 6:30 in the morning. And so that's a process improvement in terms of a service level expectation. So they're going to adjust to that and they're going to have technicians available earlier for us moving forward. So here's an example, some of the reports, you know, it shows us ticket totals, open tickets, average response time, resolution time. Those big bumps that you see are the health checks. So it auto generates a ticket when there's a, the the system detects a problem. So in one day, we had 127 tickets created for updates that people's computers needed. And the next day, you know, 119 of them were closed. So it's a really valuable tool.
Can you tell us what the the timeline is on the bottom? I can't read that.
Sure, yeah, it's going from March 14th to April 9th. It's just sort of a one month snapshot.
Of this, of this year. Okay, thank you.
Tickets opened and closed. Yeah. And you can see it's on average about five to five tickets a day, except for those health checks when they do the health check.
Do we have that same data going back further in time?
No, this is the first time we've actually been tracking help desk support in this way.
Okay, thank you.
And then we also get reports on, you know, our spend on the different types of issues. You know, for example, you can see 16% of their time was spent on password resets, you know, on terms of the tickets. Different issues that come up. And then this is overall for the whole time period that they've been working as to what, how much time they're spending on each issue. So we decided that we put out a help desk user survey to see how folks at the district are feeling about the system. Now, the help desk support panel does have a button you can click to provide feedback, but we only had only gotten about 10, 10 responses on that. And we felt like there was more people that had submitted tickets, so let's reach out. And so we did a survey, online survey, and we sent out to the staff in early April to assess how they're doing and identify potential areas to focus on improving. We had 32 responses from that survey. So some of the results, you know, how do you feel about TeamLogic's customer service? And it was generally positive, 62%, negative 18%, 20% neutral. We asked them, how satisfied were you with the amount of time they spent on addressing your needs? 50% satisfied, 28% dissatisfied. Now, I must say that there's the continuous improvement that's going on. So some of these folks might have put in a ticket early in on the process, and we didn't have the the roles and responsibilities well defined in terms of who's going to be reassigned the ticket. And a lot of cases, actually, it wasn't TeamLogic that was taking too long. It's just that when it got reassigned, maybe, you know, internally, we didn't, we weren't organized enough to respond to the ticket request in time. And so again, this is overall how satisfied, again, 50, about 50% satisfied, 37% dissatisfied. Most of the comments led to, you know, we need people quick, fast, you know, we need immediate response. It took too long, you know, so all of those are starting to be addressed. And I'll talk about them in a little bit more detail in a moment. So some accomplishments first. So in less than six months, we quickly mobilized services to help immediate IT needs and augment our help desk support. And as of April 11th, they've received and resolved over 500 help desk tickets. The management reports are assisting us in tracking the ticketing queue. And overall feedback is trending positive. People, you know, there's definitely an adjustment period happening. And the Help Desk user survey is helping to improve services. And now this is a graphic from their online survey that folks can choose to do. That was at 3.64 beans, average being satisfied with the service. So next steps, we are beginning to backfill these vacancies. And we have actually a new IT supervisor that's starting next Monday. So we're really excited to have a new person on board. And then we'll start looking at the other positions, analyst positions. The district, we brought on a temporary IT worker to provide immediate in-house support during this time over the last few months. So if somebody needs a new keyboard or peripheral, this guy's physically on on premise, and he can deliver different gadgets to folks and help solve problems locally. We're going to continue to evaluate the efficiency of the efficacy of the Help Desk Support Contract. And we're going to return to the board to discuss whether or not to extend it long term. And we'll be doing that. The contract has been extended to September, and we'll get back to you before it ends to decide whether or not we want to do, you know, an annual contract going forward. But we're starting to think that a hybrid approach is probably best with some internal and external so that we have that immediate response time for folks in-house. So we're also, of course, working on the long-term IT strategic plan and we'll providing planning goals in the future moving forward. And that's it for the presentation. Any questions?
Thank you, Crystal. Board comments, questions, maybe Larry, we could start with you.
We lose him.
Cool.
Okay, thanks, Larry.
Was your presentation online or, okay, great. Sorry, I just was looking at the water supply one. So we have a big day.
Yeah, we do.
So thanks for all your work on it, and I appreciate the survey response. That's super helpful. That's all. Thank you for bringing this.
Okay, sure.
This is really helpful. I know that IT has been a department that's lost a lot of people recently. And so it's been struggling to adjust to to losses of folks and then then not bringing people back over the last year, which I think is is something that I worry that how it has impacted people to be able to just do their jobs. I think we take advantage or take IT for granted, like when it's working, nobody thinks about how important their IT department is as soon as your computer doesn't start or dies or whatever, it stops everything you do. Do you have a sense of how you're going to come back sometime before next September with an IT plan, which I think is you're referencing will consider or propose whether to do a hybrid approach or whether to bring back all the staff that we have lost? I know that would be, I think, of 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 an interest to us just because we've, we are aware of that, particularly the IT department having lost a lot of people. And frankly, just wonder how it is that IT is being able to cover all the responsibilities, given I think we're, we've lost like five of six.
Five of eight.
Five of eight.
Something like that. Yeah, yeah.
Any, any department that's lost over 60% of its staff, I would worry about its ability to carry out functions. Is Help Desk basically a backstop to just, can they do all the services that our IT staff were doing? Or are they only handling sort of like the troubleshooting with staff?
That's a good question. So first off, the IT strategic plan will come back with a whole chapter on workforce development and long-term strategies for the IT group. And at this point, we have no intention to reduce the number, and we'll have that discussion later. I mean, we do need these folks to help us with some really large initiatives that are coming up in terms of replacement of our ERP, AMI. I mean, we've got some really, we want to convert to Microsoft Office 365. I mean, there's a lot of work ahead of us in IT to improve our systems. So but that'll be coming back. But then in terms of what they are capable of supporting, we are exploring expanding their scope of services to some extent. You know, we definitely have subject matter experts for SAP. I mean, GIS is a very complex model that was developed over 20 years in-house. And the staff that we have for GIS is vital and integral to our operations. So I don't see that ever being, you know, given to help desk to support. But yeah, we are thinking, you know, could they take on, you know, Microsoft Exchange server updates? Or, you know, like incremental, we don't want to give this company, you know, too much too soon. And is this the right company? Is this the right platform to use? So that's still to be determined.
Great, thank you. I'll just say, you know, I'm not an IT expert by any means. And I've gotten help from from Help Desk and getting set things set up. And I found people to be responsive and polite and everything. So I haven't filled out the survey, but you could put me in the satisfied category. But I just, I know that as you mentioned, Crystal, we have a number of of technical initiatives coming up. And I know that obviously the IT space is, you know, has rapidly transformed over the years. And given that we have so many staff out and we're looking at whether to do a hybrid approach and so forth, I would just see this as an opportunity to really make sure we're building an IT program and department for the future of where, what our our technical needs will be. And I don't know what those are. That's that, well, I leave that to you and to maybe consultants or advisors who can really help us. Because obviously, things are just rapidly changing as we had to deal with Zoom, you know, you know, in the pandemic. These are things that are pushing us all forward, and nobody thought three years ago that we would all be on Zoom. But here we are. So anyway, thank you for the update.
Thanks a lot, Crystal.
Great, thank you.
Appreciate it.
There are no public comments that I see. Until it gets the need. I can just.
Okay, moving to the next item on the agenda. Update on our water resiliency roadmap. Will all buckle in for the ride?
Yeah, does anybody need to take a break? Let's see if I can find the presentation. And then we'll actually share our screen this time. Harry, I'm not seeing the, oh, here we go. Okay, good. Where's the? Okay, thanks for bearing with me and my technical expertise. Unfortunately, we didn't need the Help Desk to get this far this morning. And we do have a lot to get through this morning. So we will try to move at a brisk pace, but yet, of course, we're interested in questions, comments and discussion. Our goal, of course, is providing you more information on the roadmap as we develop it. And just a, you know, one or two things to to think about before we get into the presentation. You know, it's easy for us to represent the roadmap on a nice neat schematic. But that sort of simplicity belies the complexity of what we're really trying to do. And as staff think about and develop these projects and we go deeper into the projects, you know, it it becomes clear that that these are very complex. And inherent in these complex projects and all complex engineering projects, schedules will change as you get more granular. At the higher levels, for example, in this, in the assessment, and we'll see an example of this today. I'll point that out in a second, but you know, it looks like a singular bullet item that you're dealing with. And as you dive in deeper, it becomes five or six bullet items. And the complexity changes the schedule, and sometimes the budget as well can change as a result of that. So one of the examples that we'll see this morning, in fact, is maybe one of the simplest, simple is not the right term, but straightforward anyway, project on our roadmap, which is the Sulhuli Electrification Project. Pretty well understood, yet out of the gate, our first meeting with PG&E, they're backtracking to the point where it wasn't clear whether the project might even be viable from their perspective. You know, subsequent meetings have cleared that up and things are back on track. But it's just an indication that we are not in full control of the schedule for these projects. We're going to be working with multiple agencies. PG&E is just one example, and we'll be working according to their schedules. So we'll see a little bit of that today. And so with those opening comments and maybe one more, and that is that we we did hear the board February 28th with the adoption of the roadmap. And and we, you know, as an organization, you see the team here with, joined by Carrie or or Water Use Efficiency Manager, and of course, Crystal, our engineer, engineering director. We, as an organization, are moving this roadmap forward. And all of these efforts, these projects are moving in parallel to the extent we can, as quickly as we can, yet thoughtfully. So with those sort of opening comments, we'll, we'll jump into the presentation. So we're going to cover our roadmap goals, milestones, and just to remind ourselves and our customers what the main elements of that is. Now we'll get into updates on the early actions and that'll move into the longer term projects. And a couple, you know, not mentioned on the longer term projects here, right? Recycled water being one of the ones that we're keeping an eye on. And of course, AMI is also on the roadmap further out. And we know there's presentations and thoughts being developed to bring to the board and the committees on those subjects as well. So initial schedule looked like roadmap selection in February, which was done. And we've begun forming and looking at how we can bring onboard consulting teams to support us with the technical work. And we've begun the work, as you'll hear this morning, on the No Regrets Early Action Items. And we're hoping to come back to the board originally August. It looks perhaps maybe more like September in terms of looking at a more detailed schedule. And again, the the main elements included in the roadmap, right? The water conservation flexible drought strategies of which, right? There's expanding the long-term conservation, there's water shortages contingency plan, AMI water loss and so on. We're also looking at options, right? Improving generally classified as improving the operability and flexibility of the system, maximizing Sonoma water and increasing local storage, developing new supplies and a regional groundwater bank. Another way of looking at it, I'm just checking to see if the colors came out again, sort of. Well, the gray turned to kind of pink on this one. Interesting. Just another way of representing these different projects on the roadmap.
I would note that. Paul, if I could interrupt for a quick, quick item. You noted the, you know, the recycled water expansion and it's part of the roadmap. We know that the state is required to release a framework for direct potable reuse in '23. I'm guessing it'll come towards the end of the year. I'm sure there, you know, there, there will be a lot to learn once that framework is in place. At that point, would it be possible to have an update? Whenever, when that framework is released, would it be possible to have an update on how that might apply to our recycled water program?
We can certainly keep you apprised of those developments. Yeah.
Yeah, thank you.
Absolutely.
I, since you brought that time that up, I just want to say that I think we've all wondered to what extent recycled water with those guidelines out would become a more meaningful opportunity for the district. So I think not only an update, but I think it'd be really great to like revisit what of the projects we have previously looked at might have new viability or or different viability based on those, based on those guidelines. Because it's, it's a, it's a, it's a, I think, I feel like it's been a strategy that we have not known how to pursue exactly waiting for these guidelines to come out. So it'd be really great to understand if they have substantially changed things and what might be early opportunities for us to take advantage of them, you know, maybe recognizing too that it would be very early on. And so it's, I'm sure that there'll be years of development about what it actually means to implement the guidelines. But what might we do? Because there might be some funding that's available right out of the gates to try to promote development, and we might want to take advantage of that. Thanks.
Okay, so moving along, we'll jump right in. So stream release automation, what this is, as you know, right? We're required to release water from both Kent Reservoir and Sulhuli Reservoir to support fisheries below. And there are certain stream flow requirements that we're asked, required to keep. Currently, the the process is somewhat manual, and we feel there's a maybe potential there for improving the control scheme that we have to to match the releases more closely to the stream flow requirements. So our challenges, when we, when we look at this, a schematic here on the left just shows one example. So Kent Lake, right? The the release is right at the valve is right at the bottom of the dam essentially. And the control point is the US stream gauge, which is, you know, miles downstream. There's four or five hours travel between those two points for a water molecule. And so when you move the valve, you don't see any, any change in the stream gauge for four or five hours. So it's a fairly slow, it's also for us a manual process. We've got to go to the internet, type in the stream gauge number, look at the number. So some, some person is physically doing that and then picking up the phone and calling operations. And we do need staff to sleep, so there are gaps in our control program at the moment. And we feel that with an automated program, right? If we capture that USGS data, bring it into SCADA, we can develop an algorithm to help control that valve more closely. So if there are any changes that are needed to match the stream flow requirements, that'll all hopefully take place automatically. One component of this project may be the need to add a stream gauge. So we reduce that sort of lag between time of valve movement and time of stream flow changes. So we'll be looking at that as well.
Paul, in addition to that, it'd be, it'd be great to have the fisheries folks come and talk about, about how this might have impacts to in-stream flow habits. how this might have impacts to in-stream flow habitat for fish because rapid oscillations of flows in streams, that's not how nature behaves. And given we have a dam with a valve where we could, you know, dramatically make changes on a very short time scale. That has potential impacts on on fisheries and spawning habitat and other things. And I understand our desire to be, you know, really efficient and meet our guidelines and meet our requirements while also conserving water. But let's also make sure that what we're doing isn't having an unintended negative impact on the health of our fisheries because of our ability to quickly rapidly make changes in water, that's not necessarily good for fish. So I think that that part of what we're talking about here and is worth definitely exploring is how to approach that in a way that obviously generates some additional yield, but also still is protective of of our fisheries objectives. Because fundamentally, that's what our flow release requirements are intended to benefit.
Yeah, totally understood. Just for reference, you know, one, one CFS is about 7.48 gallons per second, right, going down the creek or or stream. But even just that represents two acre feet per day. So if we're off only by a half a CFS, it still could represent a savings for us across a year of 300 acre feet. So there is potential and I completely understand what you're saying about big changes in in flow or continuous changes in flow not being, not being good. So we'll, we'll take that under advisement. Thank you.
Thank you.
Paul, I was just curious, can we move on this internally or will it require some external support to figure out the technical requirements as well as the modeling?
Great, great question. So so we have, we have engaged Balance Hydro, who's a consulting firm specializing in in stream gauges. We're working with them to understand, you know, where we might put an additional stream gauge and to look at the control logic around some of the issues that Director Schmidt has just brought up. We're also working with the USGS in how that's, so that's an external element of the project, Balance Hydro. And then working with USGS to get access to their stream gauge data, which they collect in a little hut by Samuel P. Taylor. They're, they're likely going to allow us to put our own, you know, PLC there. So we can just have that directly, maybe by cellphone back to our SCADA. So we capture their data. If that data can go in our historian for posterity and we can write our own control algorithm internally. But there may be a need for some additional support, just kind of globally looking at this and to understand if, if we're missing some opportunity.
That's a good point. I I just want to add to that because it's a, this is, we haven't really had much time to actually talk about this particular project. So it's intriguing and then we're taking a little bit of advance that we won't have probably as many questions maybe as others because we've seen them more. But I'd like to see the, this, this project brought up with the Lagunitas TAC to make sure that they're aware of it and that they are able to provide some early input that could help guide how we might approach this project and and, you know, they're an incredibly important partnership, obviously, to the district in managing Lagunitas Creek. So let's, let's make sure that that ends up on as something we promote as an agenda item.
Yeah, I mean, internally, of course, you see me at the committee and board meetings, but on our team, we have, you know, Lucy or Water Quality Manager Jonathan, Sean. And of course, our control systems folks helping us with the project as well. So, but the TAC is, is something that we've thought about. We just haven't quite got the schedule together yet.
Okay.
To explain, something that we can bring kind of to really explain, because the TAC are going to be very interested in details. And we want to, we want to get to that point and bring it to the committee first here and then then to the TAC. The deeper explanation of what we're doing, the timing and what we hope to achieve.
I might encourage an early conversation, just to say we're, I mean, what we're looking at and what concerns they might want to see addressed so that we can come back with a representation that's responsive to to those questions. Given the faster we resolve any issues and concerns, the sooner we can maybe potentially drive the benefit.
Understood. Thanks. Okay. Then one of the other early actions, just briefly, this is the optimizing the purchase of water from Sonoma. And the idea here is, you know, we have our current strategy, right, which is front loading through the summer months and through the end of December. And then pausing at that point, if you think about it and looking at what's the rate, is it a wet season? Is it dry? What's the forecast coming forward? Should we continue this high rate of purchases or can we afford to back off and just take our minimum amount of water from Sonoma? That's our current strategy. There is, I feel, an opportunity for us to improve upon that over the long term and take a 20 year slice of time and understand just statistically, what's the right volume of water for us to be thinking about purchasing annually as opposed to this sort of individualized annual purchase. If we can think about over 20 years, is there, is there a formula that we could develop that will allow us to sit here and have a basis for how we're going to be purchasing water from Sonoma? Rather than, than what we have is, it's good, it's nimble. But it's hard to, for each one of us to come up with the same answer. And it would be, be good for us to have, have a sort of a formula for, for how we go about purchasing water from Sonoma.
Paul, I have a similar question on this one. It's, this is, it's going to be a very interesting model.
Yeah.
To understand how to best manage that transfer of water from Sonoma. A lot of variables that'll go into the model. It'll be great to, you know, if we can get updates on and how that's proceeding and who you might be working with to develop the model.
Yeah, so, so we haven't really started on this. As I say, we're still operating under our current model, which is the sort of interannual approach where we just purchase across the summer. And then, you know, think about whether it's wet or dry in in the winter months. I'm, I'm hoping to bring Woodard and Kern onboard, who are helping us now with some program management. They've done previous modeling for us. They're not going to be participants in, you know, the other projects that we're looking at. So we'll have this potentially sort of independent modeler that can really look at what the proposals are from the other teams on storage, on conveyance, even on Brackish D-Sell and give us some, some good sort of independent advice in terms of modeling to support those projects, but also this should, early action optimization from Sonoma. So that's my thinking around how we would approach the modeling and who we would use.
It's one more comment, Ben. It was great to see the list of grant opportunities that are being pursued and that are coming up in your director's report during the board meeting. I did notice that the opportunity for applying for applied science grants from, I believe it was the Bureau of Reclamation, was not on the list. I think their call is going to be released in May. There may be opportunities, you know, for, for example, this type of modeling that may benefit, say, from an academic collaboration as well. Or other elements that, you know, that start to go into academic territory. There may be opportunities to address some of those through this applied science grant. So just a thought.
No, it's, it's, it's a good one. And staff has, I believe, started to look into that opportunity since you raised it to our attention at an earlier meeting. So let us take a look at that and it'll I'll loop back directly with you on where we are and I I think the yeah, it, those far out opportunities, when we know of them that are few months out, ideally should be referenced in the table, right? The, the table's kind of an ongoing development effort, but I do want on there what may be out there that staff is looking at that it may not fit. But just for clarity, you know, that we're, we're looking broadly and what is, looks in play and what doesn't and why. And I think that that ultimately will be the better, fuller picture. Suggesting there was any decision because I haven't heard about anything on this particular one yet.
Okay, so that's, that's a couple of the early actions that are sort of with the Water Resources team. Crystal, her shop is looking at the Sulhuli and Phoenix items. And so Crystal's here this morning to give us a, an update and that way you guys don't have to listen to me drone on for two hours.
Okay, thanks, Paul. So first we'll talk about the Phoenix Pump Station project from Phoenix Lake to Bon Tempe Reservoir. So this would improve our operational efficiency and allow us more frequent use of the water without intensive system modifications, which I'll explain in a moment. An estimate of 260 feet is just a one-time pump down of the lake. So if the lake was to refill, you could, of course, increase that to much higher numbers over the year, depending on rain events. Here's a map, location map. Phoenix and Bon Tempe are both located on the watershed. Phoenix is accessible through the Natalie Coffin Green Park and Bon Tempe is typically people driving through Sky Oaks. There's a map here. There is a fire road between the two, but it's not accessible to public cars. So Phoenix Lake, just some quick facts, it was constructed in the early 1900s. It has a storage capacity of 411 acre feet, which is very small compared to our total storage volume of over 80,000. It's actually not the smallest lake, the smallest lake is Lake Lagunitas, but and it's primarily used for public recreation, hiking, fishing, et cetera. And to, in order to use the water from Phoenix Lake, it, I'll talk about it in a moment, it requires a bit of work on our part to switch a potable water line to raw water and do some disconnections and reconnections on that. And then to get it back, we have to disinfect the line to bring it back to potable. But in the middle of the lake, you can see a little barge here. This is a 50 horsepower pump in the center of the lake on this barge that pulls the water from the lake. Just first off, there's a number of alignments that we're looking at in terms of proposed routes. One route runs up to this little peak here. This is where there's a structure there called the Phoenix Gate House and we have electricity to that site where we could put a pump station because that little barge pump in the lake isn't big enough to lift the water from Phoenix to Bon Tempe. We have about a 600 foot lift there. And looking at about three MGD flow, we're looking at a pipeline between 12 and 20 inch diameter pipeline. So maybe 500 horsepower pump. So we're still looking into what's needed in terms of a pump to move the water from one lake to another. Another route goes up Fish Gray. This is a fire road. This alignment and this third alignment that we're looking at is a filter plant road. It would run next to the Bon Tempe Treatment Plant and up to the lake. A little bit more about how we do it now. So now we have this barge pump in the middle, it's 50 horsepower. There's this potable water pump station next to the lake, next to the log cabin called the Phoenix Lake Pump Station. And inside are two 250 horsepower pumps. That allows us to take potable water from Bon Tempe and move it up Concrete Pipe Road to Fairfax. So, so if San Geronimo or Smith Saddle were out of service, we could move water from the Bon Tempe Treatment Plant to Fairfax. Water from Bon Tempe can flow by gravity to Ross Valley and to Southern Marin. But that's what that pump station is for. So when we want to utilize Phoenix Lake raw water, we actually have to do some, take some piping apart in the pump station and convert the potable water pump to a raw water pump. And then we can push water up through the potable line to Bon Tempe Treatment Plant. And of course, to reverse that, we have to disinfect it and put it all back together. It takes about a week for us to even get, get it going that way. And, you know, we don't want to do it in the summer either, because if we had a, a, a water supply outage to Fairfax, we want to, or San Geronimo Treatment Plant. We need this potable water pump station in service to bring water from Bon Tempe to Fairfax. So it's not operationally efficient for us to, to, to do this conversion on a, on a, on an ongoing basis frequently because we can't do it in the summer, which is when we need the water is when we're in drought and it's summertime. So some of the infrastructure needs for this project. We need to install, you know, some raw water pumps, repurpose. There is a, we were thinking about an existing raw water line on Filter Plant Road that used to take water from Bon Tempe down to Phoenix. It's, but we found out recently, it's a, it's a cast iron, it's not in good shape. We're looking at maybe relining part of it, but that's about 2,400 additional feet that we thought we could use. So we're, it's looking like we're going to need to install not 2,000 feet of pipe, but maybe four to 6,000 feet of pipe, but we can reduce the diameter. We're still looking, you know, it's in design, it's preliminary design. We might go a little bit smaller in diameter.
Sorry, sorry, Chris, just the pump station that you use to move water from Bon Tempe to into Fairfax, if, if the San Geronimo line is and which is next to the log cabin. Are these adjacent to Bon Tempe or to Phoenix?
Phoenix, it's right next to Phoenix Lake.
Station just seems so far from Bon Tempe. I'm just.
No, no, no. Well, the Bon Tempe Water Treatment Plant has, takes its water from Bon Tempe Lake.
Right.
Which is at a higher elevation.
Right.
And then it flows downhill towards Phoenix Lake. And by gravity, it can get to Ross Reservoir up the hill a little bit. But to get it all over the hill to Fairfax, you need this pump station at the bottom.
Okay, so it's, water is coming down from Bon Tempe.
Treatment Plant, yes.
Station moves it back up, up to here. If it needs to go to-
Yes. But normally the flow is from Smith Saddle to Ross Reservoir in that direction. All right. So we are going to issue an RFP for some technical support for electrical engineering. We're planning on putting that out soon. And depending on the size of the pumps that we're going to need, we may need to put in a new application to PG&E for service traps. So we'll be looking into that. And so here's a schedule. We're still determining what's the preferred alternative in terms of the route and sizing. We'll finish, we're hoping to finish Sequa in early 2024 and then we can move on to final design. Construction would start next summer. Because of the owl season and the very short construction window, it may take up to two summers to complete the project. Estimated cost at this point is $5 million and we're looking into some word of funding as well on this project. One more piece of information on this. The county at one point expressed interest in utilizing flow from Phoenix to Bon Tempe as a flood control measure. And so we've reached out to the county, they actually just got back to us yesterday. And so we're going to be meeting with them to see if they're interested. But to do so would probably require a much larger pump station and larger pipelines. So that's an increased cost. So we need to talk to the county about it. We need to do some hydraulic mod, if they are interested, we'll do some hydrologic modeling to determine what the appropriate sizing would be to have a flood control benefit. So that'll, that'll take a, another contract on the side for that. But we, we, we will be meeting with the county to see if they're interested in collaborating in that, that effort.
If I could just take that a bit further to, to build on Crystal's comments on this item. This has been longstanding interest over years. The, the county is interested, of course, to do flood control projects in various ways. And this has always been identified as one that they've looked at. We have made it clear to the county and we're continuing that we need an answer soon of, are you interested or not? And if you are, we need to work together at a pretty quick pace to understand the scope. If they were interested, it would be a very different project. It would be a larger project. And it just has to do with the timing is so small for flood control. If you have another storm coming in three days, you'd want to empty it out. So you need a, a, the timing factor to be able to move water greatly increases, which drives the size of the pump station and the piping. So what I'm getting at is there'd be probably not insignificant dollars that would need to come from the county, among other things, how we would operate it and who and when in an understanding. So it, it would be far more complicated. On the other hand, multi-benefit, you know, is the right way to go if you can, right? From a ratepayer standpoint. So we are working with them. I, you know, what's so very important to staff is we don't complete the, or halfway through the design or complete the design and have the county say, you know, we're interested at that point. So that's what's going on. This is an, you know, interjurisdictional discussion. So I'm hopeful in the next few weeks, we have clarity on the interest or not from the county. I initially looking at it, it doesn't feel like a great project from a flood control standpoint. Because if you think about the size of that watershed, the Ross Valley, you know, San Geronimo Creek. This is very small and kind of at the headwaters, so to speak of that. But nonetheless, we, we do need and want that clarity and we'll be working to get that.
That's a great project. Thank you for, it'd be really curious to hear an update when we hear back from the county about that. I think it's, I agree, it's a, a great multi-benefit project if it works for them. Because of the size of of the reservoir and the ability to pump and vacate and so forth. I think that'd be really tricky. The water levels would also go up dramatically, up and down really dramatically in order to vacate that space. So that might have other impacts to our system or to the environment. So more food for thought.
Okay, thanks. Okay, so in summary, um once we select the preferred alternative, we'll be moving forward on a probably a mitigated nick deck will be the level of sequel required for this. Uh we also are initiate. We've also initiated a water treatability assessment because the Phoenix Lake water is slightly different than the water quality than the Bon Tempe. So it's a different alkalinity, different turbidity, you know, in terms of Bon Tempe Treatment Plant's ability to treat the water and adjust chemical feeds. We're looking into that as well. And then also we're looking at how we're gonna diffuse the water into Bon Tempe Lake so that, you know, it's it's well mixed with the Bon Tempe Lake water. And so preliminary design is underway. We've got land surveying out there already. Um and engineers are working on it. And construction would be anticipated to start in fiscal year twenty five, which is next summer. So.
So I I just wanted to kind of look at the schedule and loop back to Paul's earlier comments and kind of how what that means in context of this project. So for example, the nesting owls likely weren't taken into consideration in the Jacobs project because that happened once the engineers start looking at that. So that might have caused, you know, a year delay. Of course, if the county's interested, the schedule would be very different, and we would bring that back to the board. I mean, likely very different to discuss, do we want to proceed with the county understanding these schedule delays? But the the point being really what Paul was saying is we get into this. Things happen with the schedule. As more information comes, more complexities or more opportunities. And but that's part of the ongoing briefing and updates to the board. So you know, you fully understand what we're doing and really trying to move as quick as we can, being very clear to the extent we can on what's driving the schedule or not.
And all the more, the sooner we prioritize, the better, right? The the more we can take stuff off that that we're not and not revisit, then that'll help us use our time efficiency efficiently.
Okay, and now let's talk about Suluhule electrification. So here's uh Suluhule and um Nacasio, because this project involves pumping water from Suluhule here down to Nacasio. Safford Lake is over to the right, just for context. Uh it's in rural Northwest Marin, and it's twenty while twenty miles west of Nevada. Uh Suluhule Lake Facts, who was constructed in nineteen seventies. It has a storage capacity of ten thousand acre feet, which is represents thirteen percent of our total storage. Um it's used for public recreation. We have an agreement with California Department of Fish and Wildlife for some stream releases to Walker Creek for wildlife benefit. And uh just um as an example of how we've used it in the past, when we brought in the generator to run the pump station last during the drought, it cost us one point three million dollars uh that year to uh to to operate the pump station.
Crystal, before you go on, uh can you tell me what what are the flow release requirements right now for Walker Creek from C D F W?
That is a good question. Do you have?
Uh Walker Creek right now is ten C F S. Uh and I I know because I was just typing in the stream gauge number, which if you're interested is one one four six zero seven five zero in Google and it'll pop up with the charts for you.
So ten C F S year round?
No, just right now. It's seasonal. So it was twenty C F S, I think. And then in April, we're at ten, and then summer, maybe we drop to eight sometime in May, something like that. I can get you there if you're interested.
That would be great. Yeah.
Crystal, can I ask a quick question on the pumping? So in twenty twenty one at one point three million, how much water was actually moved out of Suluhule for that cost?
That was the four hundred and twenty, wasn't it?
No, uh so with the diesel generators director sent, yeah, about two thousand acre feet.
Okay. That's good to know.
The um right, and it it does. The this project is not only a water supply and operational efficiency, but it also has a payback associated with it. Because once we do have electrification, we won't have this um really very high cost of the a very large diesel generator in the fuel, which costs far more, of course, in turning on the power once you're electrified.
I I know, Paul, you'll be you'll be discussing uh the possibilities of employing solar uh energy as well, which would also have a
Yeah, I'm gonna talk about that.
Sorry, Crystal. Yeah, that'll also have an important benefit if it's feasible.
Yeah. Okay, a little bit more. So for the Jacob study, they estimated four hundred and twenty acre feet a year um to be transferred. But as we just learned, it was two thousand acre feet that we moved over during the drought. So the number could be much higher. The way that the pump station is sized today, uh running one of the pumps is six and a half million gallons per day. That's seven thousand acre feet uh if we were running in it continuously. But of course, the lake doesn't hold that much. So where are we gonna get water to put into the lake? And that's the long term project to bring water in from Sonoma. But uh moving on. Um they would at the based on the current lake uh watershed um and storage volumes, uh four twenty is very conservative amount. So here's a picture of the pump station. It's at the base of the dam. It's got two eight hundred horsepower pumps, four hundred and eighty volt. They're low voltage, soft start. Takes about twenty eight hundred amps to start up. That's the one item that P G and E is most concerned about because it causes a flicker when we pull that much power. So they need to upsize capacity and lines in order to get us that power. That's what they're worried about. The power, there is no power there to support this at this time. That's what we're looking into. When we ran the pump station in twenty twenty one, we brought in a two megawatt generator. So you imagine we need about two megawatts of power. All right. And here's just a look at where the uh pump station flows out to. There's a pipeline that runs from the Suluhule reservoir at the base of the dam where the pump station is located um across uh over under the lake and up a hill. It's about a seven hundred foot lift compared to Phoenix, which is a six hundred foot lift. So um the pipeline is between twenty four to thirty inches in diameter. And as I mentioned previously, when we run one of the pumps, it's six and a half million gallons per day. There's a point at the top of the hill where it discharges to atmosphere, and then it runs via creek, a creek bed through some ranches, and then flows into Nacasio reservoir below. So it has overland flow. Actually, when we we set this up last time to run for the drought, we ended up having to install a footbridge for the cattle to cross the creek bed because of erosion concerns. Alright, so um current efforts underway. So we've been meeting with P G and E. We've got two studies going on with them. One's a load analysis and the other one's a sustainable solutions turnkey analysis, which I'll talk about a little bit more in detail in a moment. Um where we are working on our Sequa environmental review. We're also researching the option alternatives for having a permanent generator, a fuel cell or solar. And then, of course, electrical engineering consultant for technical support. So the load study. So we have executed an agreement with P G and E, and their engineers are currently in studying the um and working on the load study, determine the capacity needs to bring electricity in. And as Paul mentioned at the very beginning of the uh of this meeting on this topic, at first, P G and E said, no, we don't have the power capacity. But now I think they've changed their mind and they are finding the power capacity. So it's just a matter of running the lines, we hope. So but we're waiting for them to get their final um determination back to us. So they would expect the district to pay the upfront capital costs for installing the electrical supply lines. Um and with two different refunding options. So one is to pay it back over ten years, depending on our energy usage. Um and then versus a fifty percent discount on the capital costs of no refund on our electrical use. So there's two different options. We'll be looking at it financially with the best financial alternatives for those. Um other potential options that are under review is um to try to reduce that startup load, which is P G and E's main concern. We can install a battery for pump startup, maybe one megawatt battery that would get recharged from the electricity from the line uh to lessen P G and E capacity needs. And we're also evaluating medium voltage versus low voltage pump motors, which would reduce that startup amps as well. So um and the well, actually, it would reduce the um the on the lines, you get uh the voltage on the lines would be higher, so they'd have less loss. And so it wouldn't cause as much um the flickering issue that they're worried about. We'd have to put a transformer in, you know, possibly at the at the pump station. Okay, um now there's this other analysis that P G and E is working on, sustainable solutions turnkey analysis. This is a different study, a completely different engineering group at P G and E, and they look at alternative power supplies. So they are specifically looking at solar, and we've already had site visits with them. Uh you know, we need about three acres of land to put in enough solar for two megawatts. So um we're looking at if it's even possible, can we float the solar panels? Of course, it also limit our use of it to daytime, right? So uh we'd need another power source if we wanted to run at night or when it's cloudy and we're not generating power. Um so we're looking at solar as an o- as an option. And then, of course, I mentioned the permanent generator, fuel cell alternatives, um uh natural gas fuel cell of some sort. Um we're analyzing that as well. We have the San Geronimo generators as a recent data point, but I should mention that those generators are emergency generators. If we were to install a permanent generator for Suluhule, it would be a was considered a a prime power generation system, which is a tier four air quality control permit that requires um diesel um particulate filters and scrubbers. So it's a bit more uh work to to make sure we meet uh air quality requirements if it's a permanent generator that's gonna be used regularly. That, of course, increases cost. Okay, for Sequa, um once we figure out what the solution preferred alternative is, we'll have a environmental sequel analysis and ESA is on board to do that as well. And um just a summary, um different technical alternatives are underway. Um we ESA is working on Sequa and P G and E estimates two to four years out of project completion, but that's really dependent on their schedule. So it's P G and E's is holds the schedule on that one. And we are exploring grant funding for this project. I think it was mentioned that this project has been earmarked at federal level as well. So from the Army Corps of Engineers, sorry?
Yeah, from uh Feinstein and Padilla put earmarks, but as part of the war to program with the Army Corps.
Now I'll pass it over to.
You know, I I think at some point it would be good, Crystal, to have a um maybe a more detailed review of our energy use and how clean it is. I know we, you know, work with Marin Clean Energy with P G and E. And I gather we're the largest energy user in the county, if I'm not mistaken. So uh I I'd love to see kind of a dollar breakdown. And how clean is the energy that we're purchasing? And what are the alternatives? We seem to have a unique opportunity, given our long range, long term perspective to to benefit from solar in ways that maybe your average, everyday household wouldn't. Uh so at some point, it'd be great to agendize it and focus on it. I I actually have no idea the dollars we're spending, where the opportunities are, and I think it's worth looking at.
Yeah, we we do purchase the green energy from M C E as part of our electrical portfolio. And now if solar becomes the the preferred alternative for the actual power supply, M C E does have power purchase agreements and, you know, they have an an annual solicitation process. And so we've actually started to look into that if that were to become the the primary power supply.
And and I've heard some questions about how green that green program at M C E is. I I just don't know. And I I know the Peninsula Clean Energy Initiative is has other ways of measuring it. So it wouldn't it wouldn't be a bad idea to look deeper in beyond just them, where where we're getting it from. And and you know, we're 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 dealing with the adverse effect of climate change, and we can help not make it worse. That'd be great.
Crystal, you brought this up, not me. So I'm gonna it's the floating solar panels. How how viable is that? I mean, there there's a lot of discussion about this. I know they're being piloted on one of the aqueducts.
So I was asking much the same question recently. Um and it does turn out that there is a project, uh I think Napa San has done some floating solar. Now, in that case, it's a small pond, right, for wastewater, relatively small pond, I should say, for wastewater. And the the advantages there are, of course, there's limited wildlife concerns, and there are actual benefits to their process in terms of which would help us too, no doubt, but stopping algae control, you know, algae growth, no so less sunlight and so on. Um so it it does appear that folks are doing floating solar. Um I'm just not sure yet on the scale.
Yeah, I I think UC Merced has a pilot underway with one of the um that, you know, our big canals from from north to south.
All right, moving on. I carry Paul, Water Efficiency Manager. So we're gonna go through our early actions around conservation. So I wanted to start with a step back to the development of the water conservation element. So when we began this evaluation, we acknowledged that the savings and the demand reductions would reduce our need for additional supply to the same level. So it was really important that we have a high level of confidence that those savings will actually be achieved. In addition, and so saying that, of course, we have these targets set and um they are a baseline. We're gonna strive to do more. We're gonna strive to exceed them. But for this water supply planning effort, having that high level of competence was really important. Additionally, we acknowledge that these are incentive based programs, and that means we're relying on participation. And it could be considered, you know, can we just double the 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 rebate? And that will guarantee the savings that we're projecting. But not necessarily, because then we we need also factoring cost effectiveness, right? When you double the rebate, the savings are still the same amount, right? And so that that changes the cost breaker foot for each of these programs. So instead, we kind of took the path of let's build in an outreach funding source that ensures that we can target our customers in a meaningful way. Because saving water may not be their only priority. That might not be the reason why they're, you know, taking an action that, you know, helps us meet our needs. So we need to meet them where they are, right? Find out what motivates them. Find out what are the barriers? What are their opportunities? And how can we really get to encourage them to participate in these programs in the way that, you know, to help us meet these these targets? So taking these two fundamental considerations um into mind, keeping them into mind, we looked at each sector. And what were the potential water savings within each sector? And then we looked at program participation during the drought, which was unforeseen. I mean, we saw the highest level of participation, not only for Marin, but across the state during our drought responses, incredibly impressive. To that in consideration with our pre drought participation levels as well, and found a balance, right, of of what would make sense? What do we have a high level of competence with using the data that was available to us? And so we've seen this slide before. This is kind of the that the table of contents, if you would, for the discussion this morning. This is really gonna, I have slides on each one of these these items and these targets to give an update on where we are, kind of where we're going. And we also have a comparison slide of some other programs within the region that are offering um either similar types of incentives or or rebates, um so that we can kind of get an idea of of kind of where we we fall within others within the region. I will note that um many of our our water utilities around the area are starting to roll back some of their incentives. So this, we want to take this as a snapshot of today. Um knowing that that incentives change, especially as far as drought response, and I'll I'll call out a few of those as we go through. So the format of these slides is.
Small comment, Carrie, on on that previous slide. I I do know someone who installed a fifteen thousand gallon tank. So if one person met your annual goal. So I I I it seems low.
That's great.
Not that that's a great bang for the buck for our dollars necessarily, but.
We can touch on that. Um so that person didn't participate in our program. I'll tell you that. So there's other motivating factors, right? And so.
Which I think is part of the point, right? Some of this is not just banging, like your first bullet on your first slide was making sure kind of it pays for itself. And I know that's been a comment. But a lot of this is just kind of like an attitude payment. It's like an education, like you can do these things. It's important, and it doesn't necessarily have to be an expense. So I I think it's a communications effort and uh education effort as really as much as anything, and that can go a long way.
Right. And so ensuring that we have effective programs, I'd love to count those savings, right? And the way we would do that is looking at per capita water use, right? And so it's just a different metric. So we have these targets for incentive based actions, and then we have a per capita target. Hopefully someday, that kind of derives, you know, how are we doing as a community for folks who may not participate in our rebate but are doing, you know, taking action to do the right thing?
I just want to add on to that, Carrie. You do, you know, we just can't help. But um you you know, as as Jed mentioned, you know, the their you know, one fifteen thousand gallon project, like the scale of that could be, I think, tremendous in in the sense that rain barrel systems, particularly if we get in the more in our in during the drought, I got phone calls from people who were like, I want to put in a tank and I I, you know, and I and and the whole water delivery thing and so forth. But those people are that is substituting dry season, you know, the, you know, taking wet season water if we especially if it's rain fed. It's filling our, it's basically added reservoir. It's like it's like five or ten fifteen thousand gallons of new surface storage. It's in somebody's yard. And it meets their dry season irrigation needs. That's a huge benefit to us. And so I would wonder, and I know in 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 more rural parts of of our coastal watersheds, places where I do a lot of work, there are a lot of people who put in these kind of rain systems are pretty simple and straightforward. And and um so I wonder to what extent we've, you know, you've looked at a lot of things. So it it just to add to your list of things to consider, like, is there in in our more rural parts of our of our service area, are there more landowners who might be amenable to these larger tanks because they have the yard space and it would give them the reliability to have, you know, to meet their irrigation needs in the summertime? I think that. I think that industry terms more like rainwater harvesting than rain barrels and whatever.
Yeah, or cisterns, rain barrel and cisterns. Yeah. Um, okay, so starting with turf conversion programs, so what this, the format of all these slides is is the same. We start with a target on the top. To the right is our current offering. Um, just as a reminder of of what our our rebate currently is for each of these items. So for turf, we have uh, two tiers. Um, our standard rebate of a dollar fifty per square foot for standard lawn removal, low water use plans, and then a three dollars per square foot for best practice practices. This is mostly natives. This is alternative water sources. So your rainwater, your gray water, et cetera. This is sheet mulching, so really taking those additional steps, which costs more money as well, right? So it makes sense. We incentivize them slightly higher. So looking at the current status, to date, we've incentivized, we've actually cut checks for um, just over sixty one thousand square feet this fiscal year. We have another sixty nine thousand of folks who have approved, been approved for the program, and they're in progress. Um, but it takes takes time to do these big projects. So um, you know, we're we're striving for uh, meeting or exceeding at least that hundred thousand for the 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 standard turf conversion. For nonfunctional turf, we have ninety percent of our nonfunctional turf sites identified and measured. Um, so when we've jumped down to the future actions, now that we have them verified, those nonfunctional turf sites verified, we want to reach out to them on planting suggestions, resources, and and notify them of the incentives. Getting to the right person with these customer, commercial customers is always a challenge. So it's going to be a lot of handholding, but that's our, that's our target. The other um, piece of nonfunctional turf that's important and worth noting is that we want to prioritize our highest water saving sites, right? So if they have high water use and a lot of nonfunctional turf, those would be our, you know, the ones we would really spend the time reaching out to. And so that's part of our future actions. Looking at just our our standard turf program or um, all of our other turf programs, if you would, um, recognizing the rain has finally stopped, folks are starting to think about planting and refreshing their landscapes. We want to get to them and reach out to them and target them when they are at the nursery, right? So looking at our water wise plant selection, we already have a plant labeling program that's in our local nursery. So making sure that that's on the forefront of those nursery folks' minds when folks are walking in and that they understand that we have the rebate. So just doing those those initial um, steps to to engage folks when they're there making those decisions.
As before you go forward, I can see Jed and I both reaching for the for the microphone. Would you like to go first? Happy to. Um, I I think I think if I recall from the Medow study that the turf conversion benefit is like to the it costs maybe a thousand, twelve hundred dollars an acre foot in benefit for us. And and so uh, the success of this program, I think, is massive. It it's less expensive water, in a way, is why I look at it from a supply perspective than buying it from Sonoma. Way less than recycling concepts that we're talking about or potentially D Sal. Uh, and and so um, I'm glad we're we're continue to focus on it. Um, I benefited from the uh, Master Gardener Program that we had, and that it's a fantastic group of people and super thoughtful and was able to convert grass to, you know, native species and and clover, et cetera. So so kudos to you, although I'm not in your system. So, you know, I think there's a lot of people that are benefiting from from what you're doing. That's that's really, really important. Um, but I was looking at the last year's budget and and we spent like, I think a thousand dollars, I'm sorry, a million dollars in landscape incentives last year in twenty twenty two. And this year it dropped off, and I'm just curious, like, almost to zero. So what happened in the last year from our investment in that?
Well, it wouldn't be zero, because we have sixty one thousand folks that have participated this fiscal year. So but it is, there's absolutely a reduction. I mean, we were in a water shortage emergency situation. Folks were engaged in our programs in a way we've never seen before.
Yeah.
Um, and and it was because, you know, they were worried, right? There was, it was, they were scared, right? And they were taking these actions. And so now it's our job to find a way to, how do we engage with them to where they're not scared? But they're motivated. Um, and so.
The numbers I saw was like, it was a million dollar in spend in twenty twenty two, and our estimate this year is thirty thousand dollars.
It would have been, I think it would have been about seven hundred thousand, so it might have been a million for all of our rebates.
Okay.
I'm not, I I didn't bring my current budget breakdown for last fiscal year, but.
Okay. And and then and then what are your projections for investing in this in the in this coming budget? And do you feel like it's enough? Because it it, once again, it seems like way less money than buying water from Sonoma and all the other options.
Yeah, um, that we are projecting in our budget expenditures, the um, the level of rebates to at least meet this projection of a hundred and seventy thousand square feet for nonfunctional turf and and turf. I mean, we also built in funding to do the outreach campaign, to really build the materials and the support that our customers need to drive them to these programs. So so whether they take the us up on the in in the on the incentive or not, they understand the value and the benefit, and they take those actions.
I'm more curious, I'm curious, Paul, how much you think about this as a supply concept for us? So it, you know, can can we double that? You know, if it if it's that cheap water compared to buying it from other sources?
Yeah.
Wouldn't you, would you recommend increasing our investment in this?
It's such a great question. It it does feel deja vu all over again, because we we spent a lot of time struggling with just that question. Um, you know, how much does the incentive drive participation? And, you know, clearly, we could go to the extreme, a hundred dollars a square foot, and I think we'd drive a lot of participation. But if you ask me how much, it's tough to say how much we would get. So the targets that you see that Carrie is presenting here, those are built off of our experiences during the drought emergency and prior. Instead of comparing those two very different experiences, coupling that with, this is sort of a relatively new program from Marin, you know, prior to the drought. So we don't have a lot of pre drought data to work with. So we're we're kind of feeling it out. We we think based on the drought emergency, our experiences, what we've heard from sort of Medowson, from Peter Mayer, was that, yeah, these targets seem about right. But I agree, it is absolutely one hundred percent water supply savings for us that we don't then have to replace.
It's also probably a good idea, like you were saying, Carrie, to mention, to to measure other folks that may be not participating in our program, but that are benefiting from our communications and messaging. Because I hear a lot of people doing it, and it's working. So our message is getting out there, and that's probably the best bang for your buck.
In in regards to the budget, I do want to assure the board that um, were a given program or collectively the incentive program to exceed the budget, um, we would find the money. We'd be talking with the board and we'd be tapping reserve. So the budget is not a cap to participation. It's just trying to align what we expect it to be.
That's helpful. Um, I I just want to recognize going to sort of this, where, how do we find our our highest potential conservers? And I want to thank Phil for um, in the audience who last, at one of our last meetings, brought a heat map of basically where our high water use is. And I really, I I I've I've actually been looking for that map myself. And I don't know if that, where that came from, or if that we have more recent data, but it definitely shows, at least, you know, in 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 a in a in a crude scale, where we have our higher water users, our lower water users that could help target where we do, you know, advertisement. And and I think all of our tier, all of our tier two, three, four customers should get like a very special, you know, outreach effort, because they are obviously high water users. Some of them may need that for some reason, but probably a lot of them reflect people who are, you know, have have high water use, outdoor irrigation, and, you know, biggest bang for our buck. So it'd be great to see that map. Um, if there's, if there's, we have an updated version of how that might help drive things. And, you know, each of us represents a a different part of that map, and maybe there are things that we can do to help with outreach efforts.
Thank you. Uh, so here's a comparison.
Carrie, one more question on turf conversion. I look, you've mapped ninety percent of the nonfunctional turf sites. Do you have an estimate of how much we've accomplished and and where the room is to continue to improve like so?
For nonfunctional turf specifically? Um, so for all of our programs today, we'll see, right, for all turf conversions today, we've had one HOA participate in our programs. So there's a high potential for opportunity. Um, but we haven't targeted marketing, marketed to them specifically, right? Um, so I think there's a, it's definitely ripe for um, achieving some water savings kind of in a meaningful way.
Right. So so there's still a lot to do there. That's, that's, I think, important to recognize.
I think we have an estimate of how much not be, as you've got mapped all the nonfunctional turf. I I know, I want to, I don't want to throw out numbers, but I've I have a memory number of, maybe you have a better one, of how, if we converted all that nonfunctional turf, how much would we save?
You know, I don't. So you can throw out your memory number. I don't recall, and I haven't thought about it in a while.
Maybe Ben remembers, because you.
God, I I don't remember what I had for dinner last night, but um, I it it's not a trivial amount. Um, it's significant. And I do, you know, in talking to Carrie, actually, she had some more detailed slides on this, and they got moved. So to the next conservation update, this is an area, we do want to revisit with the board considerations on how to handle nonfunctional turf. Um, and there's elements to it. We could be um, you know, a bit stronger from a policy standpoint, and the opportunity is there um, in terms of potential savings. So that will be an upcoming discussion that we'll have with the board.
That's a perfect thing to recognize. We do have a committee dedicated to that. That'd be great to have that conversation, so we can maybe let you.
And I have.
Knowing that we can. Yeah, okay. I'm I'm going to restrain myself. I can't speak for my fellow members.
Okay, so just a quick comparison of others within the region. Um, a handful of folks have tiered rates, but really the average is right in there, about a dollar. Interestingly enough, North Marin Water District is as low as twenty five cents a square foot. Um, so, you know, there's a range there. East Bay Mud, I will call out this one, one um, entity that is considering rolling back from their higher level of drought. Um, in, you know, incentives back to their, what I'm calling regular, hasn't gone to their board yet, but there's a staff proposal to do that. So again, snapshot of where all these folks are today, and if they do change. Moving on to rain barrels, um, we've had an active discussion already around rain barrels, so I'll kind of scoot through this. A rebate is fifty cents per gallon up to one thousand dollars, right? So we've had twelve rebates over eight thousand gallons of storage. Two of these sites, interestingly enough, two of these, these rebates exceeded the two thousand gallons of storage. Um, so despite us having a cap, they're still going beyond that. And I think there's other opportunities, and it sounds like there's other other folks who are doing this on their own, which is great. Looking at future actions to kind of drive participation into this program, working with um, distribution, so nurseries, hardware stores, et cetera, that already sell rain barrels, making sure that they have our point of purchase material and information available to them. Another good opportunity is working with Mixed Up, our pollution prevention program, um, to joint market the stormwater benefits. Uh, they actually have a line item in their budget, hasn't been adopted yet by the county, but um, to support our our rebate. And so if that is adopted, we'll be able to work more closely with them and in a more meaningful way going forward, which is great. We're working on a um, offering a training program for rainwater harvesting through our qualified water efficient landscaper training program. Once that that's done, we'll have a list of installers that we can then publish and promote to, again, help remove some of those barriers of installation when folks don't know what they're, what they should be doing.
Just one thing on the future actions, it would be interesting to see if we could review the requirements that we have to approve the refund, because um, my family, we put up rain barrels as our first COVID project at home, and I got through the first three requirements. I said, and maybe not on the rebate, but it'd be interesting to look at that from a legal perspective where we're at to make that easier.
Yeah, good. And I'd love to hear more feedback on what that fourth bullet was that made you stop. So, yeah.
The uh, the the other point, just to touch on um, the economics, and we have brought this to the board, but not recently, and that may be worthwhile to do as well as an upcoming meeting. And rainwater harvesting is very, very different than, for example, um, turf replacement, where turf replacement is um, very cost effective. This um, is different. Um, and you're really wanting to, I believe, um, support the folks that want to do this for the right reasons, where the costs may not be a driving consideration. But what we do need to bring this back to the board, so you appreciate that this particular one on a scale we're talking about at the home is um, a significant acre feet compared to our typical comparators we use.
Doing a quick comparison, I've kind of focused in on Sonoma County's rainwater harvesting program. I think there's been some discussion on this in the past. Um, they also offer fifty cents a gallon, um, some exactly the same as us. What's interesting about this incentive is that it's managed by Goldridge Resource Conservation District, so it's not the water utilities necessarily. And the RCD has able, been able to procure multiple funding sources for specific types of users. So they have private well user funding, and they have sites that have streams running through them. So very different benefits and and, you know, motivations for offering these types of programs. The per gallon rebate is the same. They do have a higher maximum for small systems, and then even larger for for larger system, even higher amount for larger systems. When we focus in on our rainwater harvesting programs that are offered by the water utilities, there's two. City of Santa Rosa um, offers a fifty cents a gallon, but they have a different max. So their max is site specific, depending on what that site's water need is during the summer. So it's very um, staff intensive to go out and measure and do these calculations and work with the customer, as opposed to just having, again, talk about barriers, right? It's another appointment you have to make and meet with staff to go through this process. City of Hildeberg has a an incentive up to five hundred dollars. So looking at the water utilities, it's, they they kind of align with where we are, and ours is probably even slightly more robust.
Just a quick comment, and I I think it's been brought up in public comment before, but uh, Sonoma does have lists of approved contractors that can help with this. And I know for me, it was really hard to find someone who was good at it and was an expert. So uh, having any any kind of certificate program or suggested that, you know, uh, landscapers who can help would be great. It would have been great for me. And, you know, we went through, it took us months. Okay.
Yeah, that was one of my, the 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 qualified water efficient landscaper training program. That's exactly our intent, is to have qualified installers listed and published.
And Carrie, is there any opportunity to work with uh, the Conservation District in Marin?
Right, our our RCD, wouldn't that, I that, I'm sure there could, quite possibly could be. Um, considering that Goldridge has been so successful in receiving these funding, this funding source, that we actually wouldn't qualify for either, you know, either. So.
That's a really good point, because I I I'm familiar with the programs that they have up there, and and they have um, you know, they have a lot of expertise, they have a lot of local experience, they're, you know, they add, they would add the additive to our resources, and they can go after grant funding that we can't. I mean, that's quite huge. And and oftentimes, they get grants, you know, that are that substantially reduce the cost of of the tanks that would far exceed what our rebate is. And so that that could really, particularly for big water users, could be a really big driver. So I I really encourage us exploring that partnership.
Carrie, I have a quick, quick comment. Just keep in mind, guys, that if you, everyone were to put one of these in, and we use the Sonoma five thousand dollar cap, it's three hundred million dollars. While they're great ideas and they're very good, it's a really expensive alternative to do it site by site as opposed to collectively. So just keep that in the back of your mind.
Right, thank you. Um, moving on to pool covers. You can see our target is ninety. We've done twenty two to date. Looking at future action, we offer a hundred dollar rebate. Well, looking at future actions, we can do, we're planning on doing outreach to pool maintenance and supply stores, right? Again, point of purchase kind of material, working with um, Marin Clean Energy, right? Really saving energy is a significant driver for most people to use a pool cover. It's not necessarily reducing evaporation, which benefits us. Um, and then we do also have a list from the county for sites that have pools, and so it's a good kind of targeted marketing opportunity as well. Looking at comparisons for others that offer pool program, pool cover programs, um, mostly in the region, and they align quite nicely with kind of where we are as well. Moving on to laundry to landscape gray water kits. Our goal is forty, and we've done one, right? Huge opportunity here or or challenge. You can look at it however, you know, either way. The way our program works is that a customer um, is required to watch a video from our website that talks about what gray water is, you know, how it works, what's the maintenance requirements, the importance of selecting appropriate um, laundry detergent, all of these things that kind of ensure success. We want to be, you know, transparent about how these systems work. Once they've done that, they get a voucher and they can go to the Urban Farmer Store in Mill Valley. It costs them seventy five dollars, and we contribute a hundred and twenty five dollars to these components. We also offer a loner toolkit to help them with the installation, right? We want to give them the tools they need. Again, removing as many barriers as we can. Today, we've had one, so that's definitely a challenge. What we're planning on doing is um, offering subsidized training to installers. I think it's much like rainwater, gray water installers is is also a a barrier. Um, we do have a list of 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 installers published on our website. I think we can do more around publicizing that and really driving customers to that, make, increase their awareness as well.
Carrie, on the on the gray water piece, does it make sense at some point to look at that, much like we're looking at the water supply options and just allocating that funding to another incentive? Um, you know, not only are we getting one conversion kit, but I'm not sure if you can refresh my memory on the the number of exemptions uh, were given to permits for new construction in Marin for gray water systems that are required.
Right. Um, so that, right, two different ones, and one's a regulation, one's an incentive. Um, and I don't recall the number, but it was significant. It was quite high, and we actually made some administrative changes to the gray water requirement to um, encourage more folks to um, actively install gray water systems as opposed to um, just getting an exemption. To your first point. To your first point though, about redirecting the funds, I think that that will be something we continue to, that we continue to evaluate. Knowing that this list of incentives that were developed, you know, a year ago or today, if you would, are not going to be the same list of incentives we offer in five years even, right? We'll either hit saturation or there'll be some new technology and it'll be something that'll constantly need to shift and evolve to ensure it's effective.
Great, thank you. I'm not sure you can get the horse's mouth closer to the water stream on this one. So thank you for that.
Um, Gary, how much, it seems like laundry to landscape is actually one of the least effective ones that I've seen in terms of bang for the buck, but kind of whole house perspectives seems to be emerging as a better incentive. And I, I mean, I think you worked at Sonoma, so uh, Sonoma, I believe, has a benefit of a hundred dollars per fixture, showers and toilets and sinks, et cetera, up to $1,600. I don't know, I'm sure you can maybe educate us about that program and what you think about it. And is it a fit for us?
Yeah, so that would be the city of Santa Rosa has that program. It's a hundred dollars per fixture. We can see it on the comparison slide here. So that means you can't do toilets, right? That would be black water, but you could do your lav, your lav sinks, showers, laundry system, right? So those three, you could get a $300 rebate from the city of Santa Rosa for those types of installations. 100% of their rebates to date have been laundry to landscape. So there's not a high demand, even in their region, offering it in a different way to drive folks to do more of a whole house system. So I mean, it, it, we got to find that sweet spot, right? What is the motivation? How do we get people to engage? And it's got to be the right folks because it does require a level of maintenance and an acknowledgement of how the water is going to be used and where the water is coming from within the home as well. So it's not just turnkey like, you know, installing a smart controller for irrigation system or, you know, other kind of widget based savings. About that, good tip. Smart controllers, irrigation, smart irrigation controllers. So our target's 100. We have two programs currently available. One is a ratio direct distribution program where they get a hundred dollar discount paid by Marin and they buy it online. So there's no, no additional upfront cost to the customer, which is nice. The other is just a standard rebate where they pay upfront. We rebate them a hundred dollars. So we're at about, what is that, 50, 62 to date? Recognizing spring is here, we do, we'll do a promo. I'm sure comms will come up with something way more clever than I did, but something around time to turn on your controller, right? Start irrigating, but start irrigating efficiently, right? So use our weekly watering schedule, which is a tool that we publish and provide to our customers. They understand how they should be irrigating. And then also again, working with those water supply, or the irrigation supply houses and, and local contractors as well. Doing a quick comparison, city, most of them kind of align with us. City of Santa Rosa is slightly different. They don't just have a smart controller rebate. They have a fixture hardware component, so you can get up to $300 for all of these items, not just one. And that's their max. So slightly different, but really it kind of aligns quite nicely with what, what we are offering as well. Moving on to AMI leak letters. 1250 is our 1,200, 1,250 is our notifications per year goal. Current fiscal year, we did some analysis looking at how many of our AMI customers are actually engaged with the portal, right? Because that's really kind of the first step of getting them to set up the leak alerts and then, you know, respond when they get a leak alert. So 43% of our customers have the Eye on Water Portal. Of that, 87% have set up leak alerts. In turn, staff has mailed out 800, almost 900 letters for sites that have over 200 gallons per day leaks. So when we look at what are our, our ongoing actions and future actions to kind of, you know, increase the effectiveness of this program, we do have daily observations. Staff gets online every day and looks for new leaks that are over 3,000 gallons per day. These, I mean, these are significant leaks, right? These are the types of sites that are flooding someone's home. And in fact, we just had one last week where someone was on vacation and they had AMI and we were able to track them down and stop the third floor flood that had already hit the second floor. And so, you know, that's, it's a win for the customer and it's a win for us. And we're also, you know, then we mail out these, these leak letters as well as our, as the, the second point of contact. So our goal is to increase the automated notifications, right? We have this high tech system. We want customers to use it. So staff, we reduce this, the staff time, you know, to manage these and, and achieve these water savings. So we've been setting up leak alerts for any customer who already has an Eye on Water Portal, but they didn't set up their own leak alert. We're setting that up for them to help, help them out. Maybe they didn't understand how to go about that. We're continuing doing outreach to increase, you know, folks who aren't signed up, to get them signed up. And then finally, any new account that moves in that has an AMI meter, we're reaching out to them to encourage them and we'll walk them through this process. Looking at our conservation assistance.
Real quickly, the numbers for flume for this year, are you going to get to that?
I'm, you know, I'm not, but I will touch on why in a moment.
Thank you.
That will also be covered as Ben mentioned at the committee meeting in, in detail. Yeah. So Conservation Assistance Program, our target's 500, we've done 302. This is our targeting high water users, right? This is exactly what was the discussion that we kind of already had. Reaching out to new accounts after six months after they move in, right? We feel like that's a good time of, to do a touch to, to engage with them. Ongoing promotion that events and we're actually updating our, our cap brochure. And I also have the, the garden walks listed here. Again, it's a different, it's very similar service, just handled by someone other than the water utility, but we, we certainly see the benefit there. Moving on to our water loss reduction program. So our current status, we're in process of completing the 2022 water loss. We are moving forward with the technical assistance and gap analysis to determine areas of opportunity. This would be opportunities within reduction of real losses, right? So we're going to look at our current practices for proactive leak detection and pressure management. We'll look at our leak detection equipment, see if there's new technologies or other methodologies that we should be using to, you know, reduce real losses. And also taking into consideration other industry best practices that, that we may or may not be, be embarking on. We're building the internal team and we had a kickoff meeting earlier this week. So that's, that is moving forward. As Paul mentioned, we have had peer review of this water conservation element. There's been two, two separate peer review opportunities. Peter Mayer, back in August, agreed with that the, the program was substantive and achievable, did focus on a couple of other opportunities, specifically AMI and this acknowledgement that outdoor water use is going to continue to be somewhere where we want to, you know, really invest to achieve additional savings. He also called out that regulations would be another opportunity to increase demand and we know this, right? So we're kind of starting with the incentive based approach, really kind of pushing that hard. And then, you know, balancing that out with what regulations might make sense to, to bring forward for your consideration. And all of this will come out as part of the water efficiency master plan that's kind of under development. The secondary review was completed by Midales Water Management. They actually recommended the removal of a couple of the programs for exactly the reasons that were mentioned, right? If we have such low participation and the savings are low and the cost effectiveness, you know, is, is not aligned with some of the other programs, does it make sense to take them out? They also suggested increasing participation in some of the other programs, but ultimately the water savings was identical, right? So they said, remove this, add this. What we decided to do was to maintain the programs that we had presented and know that we're going to adjust, course correct as we see participation change, technologies change, et cetera. They also called out this water loss reduction program, which is why on the prior slide, we, we've initiated that, that endeavor with reducing real losses. They recognized the benefit of AMI and they also touched on the regulation and policies, opportunity that should be considered moving forward to drive savings as well. So I wanted to just briefly mention, so this, these, these are the list of all of our current incentives. I've only touched on the top five. There's a number of other incentives, but also other programs and opportunities, like, you know, we have a whole, we have a whole water efficiency program. And this water conservation element is just a component of that. And so we'll be going into greater detail, the committee meeting on all other things beyond the element and maybe even a deeper dive on some of the element items as well. So summary, this water conservation element is currently underway. We're, we're moving full steam ahead. Revving up for summer, recognizing it rains finally stopped, I think after last week. And so we can start engaging with customers in a more meaningful way. The master plan's under development and we're working on water loss and the funding is listed there as we've seen before at 1.7 million for implementation of just this water conservation element. So now all that goes back to Paul.
While you're handing that sideways, I won't stop you. When is the, when is the, the updated plan expected out? What's, what's the? Yeah, master plan.
Paul's going to remember the date better than me. I want to say it was like fall is what we are shooting for. We should, we, we, they're, it's underway, under development right now. And we'll probably have a committee update as well. And then I believe it's in August is what we're shooting for, having a final plan developed.
Okay. I mean, it, it's part of maybe the Conservation Efficiency Committee, we could look at a, a schedule and.
Yep.
Process.
Yeah.
Thank, thank you, Carrie. That was a ton of work, obviously. And, and you responded to, at least I know a lot of my questions about looking at other agencies and how we're doing. And I appreciate the detail and the follow-up. So thank you for doing that. One small idea, have, have we ever measured the number of houses that are using less water than they did the previous year? And if we have 60,000 customers, let's say, some way to measure the effect of our program besides just the number of people using our incentives, but how, how effective are we? And maybe year over year, we can look at 10% are doing better or 20%. And there's a lot of reasons, obviously. It could be a change of ownership, but you know, as long as you start collecting the data, then you can start to figure out what worked, what didn't work, what did they do? And then what other communication mechanisms and education incentives or education initiatives would, would be helpful.
Larry, any, any other comments or questions?
No, I'm full.
Great. Carrie, just a couple of things, for the water loss assessment and the water efficiency master plan, or I, I believe we're bringing in consultants for those pieces.
Correct.
Okay. And you know, in, in looking back at previous discussions with, on conservation, I, I noted in the past that there have been you know, discussions regarding the framing of this as beyond just saving water or finding, you know, the most economically favorable option, water supply options, but to really consider this as part of a sustainability initiative. Using less water obviously has a lot of impacts on our environmental footprint and addresses the sustainability goals that all of us share. Is, is that something that we should be continuing to emphasize or building towards? Particularly in our communication materials so that our customers are not just hearing this as a save water, save water, but also as live more sustainably?
Yeah, absolutely. I mean, I think that's part of what we're developing with our comms team is that sustainability will be a motivating factor for some, right? Funding will be a motivating factor for others. Having the newest, greatest, coolest new technology will be motivating for others, right? And so kind of figuring out what are those touch points to motivate folks? And not just assume that everyone will be motivated in the same way by the same message, right? And so that's, that's the challenge we're, we're facing. And the behavioral component, right? And, and all those additional water savings that go be, or benefits go beyond, they go beyond water savings. Quantifying those, right? I mean, you know, anyone who can do that, you send them my way because that is the biggest challenge, right? We know there's additional benefits, but where do you draw the box? Like where do you stop saying, you know, you know, we counted all of this, but not all of that, right?
Applied science grant.
There you go. You take out a lawn and you have, you know, less chemical use, less mowing, you know, so how, you know, where do we kind of stop? And so we took, my team took the stance of, we're looking at water savings, right? That's our goal. This is, you know, and we have all, all these other artillery benefits that we can acknowledge, but we didn't attempt to quantify.
Yeah, well, one area, right? There's more and more looking at is the carbon footprint, is the energy. And that, that does resonate certainly with folks. And, you know, there's probably an opportunity in some of our mess and there, there are numerics there. And I, I don't know if it would get granular to energy per gallon or how much we use and to some extent, to some extent, it's linear. It's a consumable. So I, I think on energy and carbon footprint, that, that could resonate with folks. And that could be something that we haven't historically talked about that we could, I believe.
Yeah, I would.
That's a good idea, Ben. That's a good idea. Jed, in, in your measure of conservation, keep in mind that the gallons per capita per day is an exact measure of that which we calculate and have goals from the state. That is exactly what's going on with the GPCD. As that number goes down, then we're using less and less water per person.
Yeah, I'm looking at the number of houses, like what percent of our houses are doing better or customers, not, not just the aggregate.
It's probably linear. It, it isn't a few people doing a lot better. It could be, but I think it's probably all people doing better.
Great, thank you. Thank you, Larry. I think we should move on.
Okay, moving on, that's why they invented chair yoga. You guys are doing good. We're almost there. Okay, longer term actions, we'll Petaluma Brackish Desal, I think you're familiar with the concept at the moment. This is the potential desalination plant near the banks of the Petaluma River, taking advantage of brackish, potentially taking advantage of brackish groundwater. As a concept that was presented late in the Jacob's assessment. Our goal with the next steps would be to kind of confirm some of the assumptions that went into, to the Jacob's assessment around the yield of the groundwater. Whether there's an alternate source for that water, such as an open intake. And then looking at, at some of the factors that might affect the design and the cost of the project. Groundwater quality, finished water quality, brine disposal and so on. The schedule that we're looking at is developing an RFP for technical support, probably April through July and bringing consulting team on somewhere in September for us to start that work in, in fall, August, September timeframe. In terms of funding, we've submitted a request, a grant application to USBR for about $200,000 with a $250,000 match. And that match would come from the roadmap implementation and pre-design funds. Conveyance of supplemental water.
Hold on one second. Sorry, go back one. Can I ask this question? So this is a partnership with Petaluma and, and North Marin. What, what, what is their, are, are, are they contributing to the studies? Is this, are they also identifying this as a priority?
Can you? Good question, yes. So we have worked with Petaluma and we have a draft MOU that at some point we'll be bringing to the board for your consideration. North Marin, or we've also touched base with them and both these, both of these agencies had, you know, in their water supply resiliency plans, notes to look at this type of project. So it's in Petaluma, currently developing theirs right now. And it's a, it's a, a feature of their plan, similarly with North Marin, where theirs was more of a comment that, you know, they should work with regional partners around desalination, but both are interested.
And the co-funding is something that we will be exploring, certainly with Petaluma, but all, both of those agencies, we recognize Petaluma is probably the key partner on this effort. For reasons we talked about, Marin setting up shop on the Petaluma River has a different feel than a regional effort, of course, with Petaluma being kind of the face of it, which all indications are. They're very interested and supportive to move forward with this investigation and we will be having discussions on co-funding to some extent.
That's great to hear. Did they write letters of support for the funding proposal?
Yes, they did.
Okay, great, thank you.
North Marin and Petaluma. So conveyance of supplemental water to storage, I think we're, we're sort of vaguely generally familiar with this concept. And we're currently working, you know, to develop what the project alternatives are and then to refine those into a singular defined project. Part of that effort will be bringing on support from technical teams. And our schedule for dropping, getting that RFP out is going to be July timeframe. And again, we'll be bringing those teams onboard in the August timeframe. To, to start that work. The funding is, you know, part of the, the budget and you'll see later, of course, we've applied for a grant from DWR for, for $53 million, which this project is partly funded with. And of course, we got word, but we'll get to the funding in a minute. So there, there's, there's funding potential. In terms of local storage, again, this is a project for consideration, looking, looking at raising storage locally up to 20,000 acre feet, though in the alternatives analysis. In the alternatives analysis that we'll be doing, we'll be considering all, uh, volumes, you know, that might make sense. So there's, there's that selection process to be done and we'll be bringing onboard a technical, uh, support team for that. Again, timeframe for that RFP will be going out probably later this month and it'll still take us some considerable time to, to get those responses in and go through them. And then those teams will be coming onboard a similar timeframe.
So when would that, so coming onboard and under an RFP, when, when do you expect that RFP to? Like, what, can you speak to the timeline of that RFP turning into a contract?
Yeah, we do have a little bit more detailed schedule in another upcoming slide, but the RFP, um, we're hoping to get it out in May. And then, um, uh, it'll take time, obviously, for team, you know, prospective consultants who want to respond to this, to look at it, to develop their response, have an opportunity for site visits, to ask us questions about the project so they can be clear and then develop their proposals, which would then be submitted to us and the team here at the district along with, with Woodard, who's our program manager, would go through the proposals, um, and then select a short list of folks to be interviewed. And that, that's sort of the process we're looking at.
I just want to flag, and, and I know I'm, I'll continue to be a broken record about this a little bit because I just feel it's really important is the discussion with the resources, the statewide resources control board and the other regulatory agencies around this. I think I really want to encourage us and maybe even make a formal request to make it happen is, is that, I know we, I know we don't know what the project is, but I think we can start the conversation that we are looking at this because the information that they may want to see may, may dictate what the RFP covers. And so I just think that that's not a conversation to have after the RFP. I think it's before. So I'd like to.
We, we did hear you. We, we are working on it and, and we'll be setting that preliminary meeting coming up.
Great.
Yeah.
Okay. And, and, and similarly, I know that part of that is a, is we, we've talked about trying to get some information to, you know, for all of us, the board included, about what are triggers for, for what renewing our, or, uh, revising our water rights, reopening our water rights. I think that's a really important factor of this that, um, do you have, have you similarly been working hard in the background despite my repeated comments about, so that I'll stop.
They're great comments and, and yes, we, we, we hear them. We've heard you. My, my comments earlier about these being very complicated projects, uh, so we are, we are looking at how best to bring and when to bring that information, sort of the primer on water rights to start with. And then thinking about what the processes are for the, for water rights as a, maybe an upcoming ops meeting.
Okay.
Yeah.
Next one.
Just a, just a short, uh, item, the discussion of the Phoenix Lake Water Transfer and the potential for improving flood control made me wonder if any of the, this, this, um, storage increase, is there any, um, possible benefits for flood control?
It's interesting. It's not something that we've considered as part of the assessments, much more focused on supply, but, I imagine that would be something we could think about, but it's.
Maybe only relevant if Kent Lake is selected because that may have some impact on the Ross Valley. I'm not sure. Um, it may not.
Kent wouldn't really affect Ross. It all goes out to Tamalas, but yeah, Kent and Nikasia, it's, it's possible.
Okay, just, just, just a comment.
Okay. Uh, and then, oh, we, we just talked about schedule. So this is an attempt graphically to show us sort of where we are. I won't go through all of it, but the three projects, the three main sort of longer term actions are here. Petaluma Brackish Conveyance and Storage on the left. And then you can sort of see we're, we're partway through April, um, that denoted by the red bar. And you can see roughly the, the approximate schedule that we're looking at in terms of, um, and what we'll be doing to procure, teams to help us with technical support on these three projects. Um, and it, it looks like the consultants are onboard by sort of middle of September, be the, the latest timeframe there. And then if we, if we think about these projects over slightly, so that was a sort of a six month snapshot, looking out through to September from where we are today. If we think about slightly longer timeframe, um, this is, this is where we're thinking, uh, we would be in terms of, of these three projects. Particularly you'll notice in terms of the storage technical analysis, um, supporting Director Schmidt's, you know, comments and concerns about the complexity of the project, there is, there is, we anticipate a significant amount of analysis that we'll need to do to support that project. In terms of funding, um, so we, we, we do have an award from DWR for two million dollars that was awarded in twenty twenty-two. That was from their urban and multi-drought benefit relief grant. So it talked at the time specifically about the emergency intertie, but also the strategic water supply assessment is included in there. So, um, we, we've submitted our invoices for the Jacobs, um, work that they've done over the past year. I think we may have a couple more invoices to add to that. Um, and then the remaining funding somewhere around one point three million dollars will be eligible to support, um, our other, our SUSA, um, projects that we're looking at. And as you know, um, the Water Resources Development Act, we all refer to it in WERDA. Uh, there's twenty-eight million dollars that was identified in there for water and wastewater in Marin County. And we've recently received news that Senators Padilla and Feinstein have issued letters of appropriation in support of, um, of Sulhuli. You know, electrification and that will help us with the Army Corps now and kind of get our fingerprints on that money. So we're, we're working hopefully quickly to get another meeting, meeting set up with the Army Corps to explain the project and, and what we need to have happen. So those are the, the funds that have been awarded, sort of, so to speak to date, although WERDA is less certain than that until we, we, we know it's being dedicated to our projects. We're working towards that. The, the other grants here you'll see are this fifty-three million dollar grant, I think it's fifty-three point two or something million dollars that we've applied to from, uh, DWR. And it's around three projects. So we've got, uh, a recycled water in there for about sixteen point one million, which is, I think, the Peacock Gap Project. We've got, um, thirty-two million dollars allocated to, um, to, to storage. And then I, or to conveyance, excuse me, and then I think, um, another five million, uh, allocated to, to storage and fishery enhancement in that grant request. Uh, we talked briefly about the desal feasibility, uh, grant that was, we, we sent in fairly recently for two hundred thousand. And then there's another local storage supply enhancement grant that we put in for six hundred and sixty-two thousand dollars. So those, the, and, and I guess one maybe missing from here, still related somewhat to the roadmap. There's a one point two million dollar earmark request, uh, for EPA funds in support of AMI for, um, uh, for disadvantaged communities here in Marin. So it's a, it's not a full AMI, it's a sort of a one point two million dollar, uh, grant. Uh, there's no match. It's just the, the funding comes and we can use that to install some more AMI meters. And then, um, this is a preliminary funding, uh, table and I, again, this table is going to change a little bit as the budget and the CIP gets developed and firmed up, this table, uh, will, will more closely reflect the CIP and, and what we'll see in the final budget documents. But it, it shows how we might be expending the funds for the various roadmap projects, uh, over the next four years. And so next steps, we're continuing to move as quickly as we can, um, on early actions. We're developing the scopes of work for our technical teams to support us with conveyance and local storage. And we're moving forward with Petaluma Brackish, the, the feasibility there. And we're continuing to track and pursue grants wherever they may be in terms of supporting the roadmap implementation. And of course, we'll be continuing ongoing updates and discussions, uh, with, with the board to make sure that you're informed of any changes and updates as, as we have them.
So if I could, Paul, um, we, we have provided the update on these active projects in the roadmap. But there are some other projects that were identified that in different ways, we're continuing to assess them. The recycled water, of course, the purple pipe pursuing grants, and we just saw that we do have some active grant opportunities. Cause those projects to be competitive with others really do need some grant funding to bring down the cost. And then we have, excuse me, kind of the large scale regional desal and IPR and DPR concepts that similar to both, and we talked a little bit about the DPR regs that are coming out. They're in a, um, kind of a holding pattern as we watch the development of the regulations or watch, um, larger desal projects come online in the, um, kind of natural technology development and understand better the cost structure and are things happening that are driving down the price or making these projects more attractive, which we believe will happen over time. So they weren't a direct part of the detailed update, but we did want the board to understand that they're still there. And we're, we'll kind of follow what I just said generally in terms of those pieces of the broader roadmap.
Board comments or questions? Larry, uh, maybe start with you. Maybe while we're waiting, I, I, I will ask, you know, um, I thank you, Ben, for that, that, that additional piece, you know, I, uh, Paul, Crystal, Carrie, we've been asking for a more holistic view of how the roadmap is both is being pursued. And I think this is a, a great effort to provide a lot of information. Thank you for pulling it all together. I do want to check with board members to get a sense of how we'd like some of these discussions, the update discussions to proceed going forward. I'm imagining some balance of big picture type, uh, views versus deep dives, you know, maybe some sort of an alternating, system of, 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 you know, staying in touch with, with all of the activities and the funding opportunities and the financial commitments. But it would be great to have inputs from everybody so that we can ensure that we're moving forward as product or as cohesively as possible, I guess, in this process.
Uh, uh, thank you, Ranjiva. I, I was, that's going to be, was going to be my primary comment here, which is this is, um, the importance of this study just can't be understated and, uh, or overstated. And, um, a lot of folks want to see how this is progressing and I'd like to, um, I'd like us to have regular updates and I might suggest, while the ops committee is one place that that could happen, I think that our regular board meetings are more well attended by the public. And so I, I think for their benefit, them being able to see the progress is, is as important as it is for us. I mean, anybody can, can, can come back and look at these, uh, uh, you know, these, um, meetings, but I don't think that many people do. But our, our regular board meetings, so I, I might propose that at least one of our two regular, um, board meetings, this is a standing item going forward and until it's, until we don't have it, but I, that's, I, I think that that's honestly, we're looking at, you know, we're looking at at least a year and so, and a half of, of key milestones and developments and decisions that I think we want, I think, keeping the board fresh on these, on these things, teeing up what are going to be the next set of discussions. We can make sure that we're giving really quick, timely feedbacks that we're not holding up the process.
Jed?
Yeah, I, I'll second that. And I think, you know, one of our monthly meetings, I think, could focus on this and, and I think that'd be great. Uh, I, 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 I'm starting to increasingly understand our cadence and, and, um, and what we're, what we're trying to achieve here and, and the three point one million dollars that we've talked about and how we will spend that is not completely defined yet. So I'm, I, I got it and, but I am, I am going to be increasingly curious how we will use that money. And, um, I think I just heard regional desal might be back on the table for further research and, and discussion and maybe spending some money on, on, on other recycling projects. I think everything is still kind of on the table to be looked at. If we go forward with the, um, the Petaluma Desal Grant Money, I think that was two hundred thousand dollars that we would be contributing of the three point one. I think, uh, if we go forward with the regional grant match, that's seven hundred of that three point one, is that about right? That we would be spending, so that's nine hundred. Uh, I think it'd be really important for us to help understand how we're going to prioritize spending that money because we can't do everything. So we do have to be thoughtful sooner than later, the less money we do upfront so that we can save for the real ones that we think are going to happen would be important. Uh, and it seems like that's going to take some time. So I, I got it. It's, it's not going to be today or next week, but, um, let's get to that point where we can hone in the, the uses of, of our spending and, in order to help our customers have a long-term, short, medium and long-term perspective. The roadmap that we approved, I think was super thoughtful and the low hanging fruit and, and we're moving forward with that. And, and so a lot of that is happening right now and these are kind of more the longer term feasibility projects that, that, um, we'll dig into. So thank you for the presentation. I know it was a lot of work, so I really appreciate it.
I would like to just address one thing, um, before I start, but the, with everything on the table, I just want to make sure the public understands too. That's the stuff that we approved in the roadmap and recycled water is part of that. And I view recycled water as IPR, DPR, the whole piece, but I don't want staff to think that they're going back to other options that weren't approved to start digging into things either. Cause I think we have a pretty clear message on that piece and I don't even, I don't know if the regional desal made it on that roadmap. And so.
Yeah. So what, what I was, it's really a good question and it's all part of kind of getting, um, alignment, I, I think is, um, Director Kush wa- was indicating in, in clarity and that is so important. What we tried to indicate, speaking specifically to a broad regional desal and the options we looked at distinguished from the Petaluma desal project is, um, at this point where the roadmap was suggesting kind of the priorities along the lines that you heard today. With regional desal not being taken off the table, but not front and center and specifically monitor the development of other large-scale regional desalination projects throughout the state and beyond to validate our costs, to understand what creative enhancements are being made and being able to loop back with that information on kind of a ongoing basis to confirm that the priorities that were indicated in the roadmaps are still, um, in place for us. And somewhat similar with DPR and IPR. Purple Pipe Recycling is a bit different because the water's there, we do have ownership to some of it. And the interest certainly is how do we extend our purple pipe system in a comparatively kind of cost-effective way to these other options we're looking at. And that's the aggressive pursuit of grants to offset the funding. So all three of these, um, are here and I think we will need to continue to touch on them in these sorts of updates and talk about, okay, what, for example, regional desal projects are going forward? In what way that we're keeping an eye on what is the status with the regulations and when they come out, have a good discussion and think about, has that changed the relative look of the roadmap? And where do we have, have to adapt, adaptively manage?
Great. And I appreciate that perspective too. I just want to make sure that we don't have too many downstream changes and trajectory that are going to continue to move the water supply piece further and further out, um, always trying to chase the next, next shiny object with that. So, but I did want to say, Carrie, Crystal and Paul, thank you very much for the presentation. A fifty-eight slide deck is, is not something you put together overnight. And so we very much appreciate it, but it was important for us to see that. One, because the clock is ticking on, on supplemental water. We need to get this, this piece moving forward. But also as we advance a rate increase proposal through the month of, uh, May, the public deserves to see what they're going to be getting for that. And that's the hard work that this board's decided on, um, and the work that you guys have done to make that happen. So thank you very much. Um, I also acknowledge that you brought up the, the timing piece and how it might be a little bit challenging for people to understand, but I think that's. But I think that's part of the public expectation from the Jacob study. I think a lot of the folks were developed, were expecting a shovel ready roadmap and not understand the complexities that we have to deal with and the thought and the and the and the time that staff's putting into to make sure we get these decisions right. So on the timing piece, it's not, I'm not as concerned as as I would be if we had other issues going on, but the but it is complex. And so when the timing gets pushed back, I think it's very important to highlight the conservation piece because that's a real time savings we can have right now. Not only will last into the future, but it will also hopefully, you know, allow us to to get through till the next to the some of these projects come to fruition and start bearing fruit. So it's very important for that also, too. We talked about the motivation of people during a drought to do the conservation. There's also me another big marketing factor, July 1, when the rate cycle potentially hits too. And so I want to make sure that all of our customers understand that there are ways that we are going to help them offset their costs so they can reduce their water bill and their demand. I think it's really important. I'm sure you guys have heard me last meeting, you're probably way ahead of me on this one, but.
That's definitely been on our minds and.
Appreciate that.
Plans for that.
So thank you. But with the complexity piece as well, one of the components for this this study, for me, that's incredibly important is resiliency. And the ability to produce our own water, whether it's through recycled water or desalination water. As we go down this process, even though the regulations for recycled water potentially DPR are going to be coming out in December, I think it's imperative that we get on that now, because if the D cell regional piece in Pedaluma doesn't turn out to be a good option, what are we left with? And how far behind the eight ball are we at that point with timing? So moving forward, at least towards the end of the year, it'd be nice to see some of the same detail given to the other options as the recycled water piece to make sure we still maintain touches on that, too. That's it. But thank you very much. Very much appreciated.
Larry, any last comments?
No, I think you guys have covered it. You're getting a handle and I appreciate especially appreciate Matt's and and Jed's for that matter, comments about understanding the pace that the district moves at. And that these things, like in all things, good things take time. So I think we're we're getting there and it's great. We just need to keep trucking.
Thanks, Larry. Well, good. I think water resources, both effective management of existing resources and a continual eye on additional resources is a never ending requirement for every water supplier. Very encouraging to see us on that path. Thanks again, everyone for the great for the great meeting.
Yes, we do have several public. We do have several speakers. The first two is Mr. Phil Soder and then Al Gromant. Go ahead, Mr. Soder.
Thank you. I've been infesting these board meetings for about the last 15 months and and conservation has gone from something we casually discuss and don't really believe in to a full fledged element of the water supply and a dozen thank yous for all of you for making that happen. The second thing is, I in chatting with Carrie before the meeting, I was trying to get a sense between Flume and AMI. And it turns out that Flume gives more aggregate data, whereas AMI is can be localized to the user. One of the things about Flume is we've now got about 2,000 installations. And I'm wondering what we can learn from that aggregate data we have. I think we projected a 10% savings in customer usage from Flume, and I'd like to see if maybe that's happening. Because that would kind of get us halfway to our at least the conservation goal that I think is appropriate. Third thing is setting particular goals for me. I have in mind that 4,500 acre feet that we're planning to get by 2040. But I'm going to be almost 100 years old by then. So I'd like to see if that could be speeded up to 20 to 2027 to get that 4,500 acre feet. And that's about 50 gallons, or I'm sorry, about a 20 gallon per capita per day savings, which is about, I think, at 17%. So if AMI or Flume could get us halfway there, that would be terrific. And and I'm sure that all of you have seen the wonderful SCADA system that the district has with that board telling us everything by, you know, tank, we can localize our water system really capably with that. But I think what AMI would do is give us that last mile. We'd have a degree of insight into our customer base and what they're doing. That would be very, very useful. And once artificial intelligence comes into the mix, we could probably start getting some really good data as to what we could do. Let's see, fourth thing is, is I'd like to suggest that we continue to set a specific goal for conservation. I'm going to use 20 gallons per day per capita and 4,500 acre feet by 2027. I'm wondering if AMI could be a capital program. And I also would ask the question, if we looked at conservation, what could we do with a $200 million capital budget? And what could we do with a 10 or 15 million dollar annual expenditure on conservation? Instead of $1.7 million, we'd spend $10 million. Could we actually get a a purple pipe system? Could we get an AMI installed? And then finally, by getting a conservation budget and and goals in place, it would really help us choose among the other remaining objectives for water supply assessment. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Al Gromit, please, and then Larry Minnikes.
Thank you for a great presentation and discussion today. So I think we heard this morning about a number of stories of under reporting of conservation actions by customers. So I'll just mention in passing that I can be added to that list. I bought a Hunter Smart Irrigation Controller, but I don't think it was covered by the rebate program. So I think there are some gaps in the conservation data. What I'd also say about the conservation data is that that section of the presentation begins with a statement that the level of conservation should be based on empirical data to ensure a reasonable level of confidence in achieving projected savings. But what I'd point out is that I think most of the data that that's being used relates to a period of time in which the water district was subsidizing the use of potable water through a below market rate schedule. And that means that that's not great data for projecting the uptake of conservation programs under the proposed new rate structure, which is higher and steeper. In other words, the projections for conservation have been based on customer behavior that was distorted by a legacy rate structure that incentivized wasteful and excessive use of potable water. So I would encourage you to factor that in when you're thinking about the potential of conservation to to be a meaningful source of of demand reduction. Other things I wanted to note, I thought that the rain rainwater harvesting projections were were low. I think the goal could be substantially higher, but that can only be achieved with a plan to educate customers, provide more meaningful financial incentives. Importantly, some maybe free or assisted system design services. And as was mentioned, a list of professional installers so that customers could get, you know, at least three quotes before making their decision, because we have heard about some some price gouging that happens when there's not enough competition in the space. I think we'd also like to see some budgeted numbers for education incentives, training of installers and subsidies. Because these are really the key drivers of the successful conservation effort. We'd also recommend that the water district consult with professionals who are highly experienced in water reuse and efficiency solutions when when crafting more detail into their conservation program. And strongly encourage you to connect with the folks at Gold Ridge Resource Conservation District because they're willing to help design better conservation programs, but also to, you know, include Marin water into regional grants. So I think being combined with them or or some of the other opportunities that were discussed. Lastly, I think addressing the energy sources that are used, including self generation is a great idea, but also putting pressure on MCE to clean the energy portfolio. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Larry Minnikes, and then Mr. Ed Jameson. Go ahead, sir.
Yes, thank you. And and thank you for the very comprehensive presentation this morning. And and Crystal brought up an interesting point in the Crystal and Paul in the presentation regarding floating solar, which I knew little about and started immediately doing investigation on. And if you're not aware, and I just learned that Hillsburg has the largest floating solar farm in the nation at around seven acres with 11,600 panels. And it is providing about 8% of the city's electrical needs. It was installed almost exactly two years ago. So it would be worth a field trip to take a look at that and to look at it for Sulhuli in particular. Since that is the most expensive of these projects at 7.2 million. This may have multiple benefits if it's workable to. It would also be interesting to note how much evaporation might be reduced by if there were solar panels on one or more of our reservoirs. And so it's it's an interesting concept and very much worth investigating on so many levels. The other thing is, is if we need to move water from Sulhuli, the time it'll be done is usually during the summer when it's bright and sunny. Understanding that at night, it's not going to be available, but certainly during the day it will, which could also significantly reduce costs. Thank you.
Thank you. And Mr. Ed Jameson, please.
Yes, thanks. On Pedaluma Brackish D cell, the proposed study needs to try to get a handle on the possible intrusion of higher salinity bay water that could result from significant pumping from intake wells. On a different issue, it would be helpful to hear a few words about the status of Sonoma's Potter Valley Supply. And finally, this is really complicated stuff. And I continue to be very impressed with both the staff and board involvement in evaluating all of these issues. A big thank you to all.
Thank you, Mr. Jameson. I have no further comments.
With that, we can adjourn the District Operations Committee and Special Board Meeting of April 21st, 2023.